Good evening. I'd like to call to order the study session for the City Council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. We have one action item on our agenda tonight is item number one. This is City Council interviews concerning the appointment of the presiding municipal judge. So before we start, we always start our meetings with the public's right to speak. I have no one that has signed in to speak at the in City Hall and no one is joining us online. So we will move directly to agenda item number one. This is appointment of the presiding judge, City Council interviews. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff report on this item?
Just real briefly, as City Council knows, the municipal charter determines the process for selecting a judge and that is up to City Council. Section eight point two says that City Council shall appoint the presiding judge. At the direction of City Council, Kirsten and Mary Ann worked very well to put together a process where we included several individuals to help us with that process. And trying to pull this up here, sorry. Let's see. I think it's in here. Yes. We created a selection committee. That selection committee consisted of councilors Stites and Dozeman. So if you have any questions, you can ask them about that process as well. But we had community members, Chris Hoppy, Diana Lopez, retired municipal judge, Judge Anne Stavich, our city attorney Gerald Dahl, myself, Assistant City Manager Mary Ann, Division Chief Eric Kellogg, and our Court Administrator Kirsten Armstrong. Selection Committee met on February fourteenth. We gathered feedback from that group to put together a draft RFP. That RFP went out and we received five proposals. The selection committee did meet and narrowed that down to three. We had interviews on April fifteenth, and from those interviews, we narrowed it down to two candidates to bring forward to City Council. So we're here this evening. We've asked the candidates to complete a ten to fifteen minutes verbal resume before we get started. And then you all have questions for the judge also, and the mayor assigned those questions last night. Everybody have a copy of the questions and know what question you have. There'll be time at the end of the interview. We have about an hour set aside for each interview. If you have any follow-up questions based on what you heard, and we'll allow some time also for the judge if he has any questions of you. With that, I think we'll get started. And our intent is to, after the interviews, to call a special meeting and then make a motion to go into the exec session so you guys can discuss it. And if you're ready to make a decision tonight, we come back out of exec session, reopen the meeting, and ask for direction to negotiate a contract with the final candidate and bring back coordinates for City Council to appoint a new presiding municipal judge. Amanda, who you have a question? Okay. Pete will be here at seven thirty-five. Any other questions before we get going? If not, I think we're ready to get going. Judge, thank you for being here. You want to get started with your verbal presentation? Great. Judge, make sure your mic, I'm sorry, your microphone's on. Push the button so the green light's on. Yeah, it has to be fairly close to get up to it. Perfect.
Thank you for having me here. I'm Jonathan Lucero, and I'm here to tell you why I am the best candidate for the presiding municipal judge. In my efforts to do so, I'm going to detail my background and my experience and emphasizing my experience specifically with municipal law, and also my level of responsibility with this area. One of the things that makes me unique, and I think that makes me the best candidate for this position, is that I view municipal law through really four different sorts of lenses out of my experience. I view it as, of course, a judge. I've been a judge now for a number of years. I love being a judge. I also view it through the lens of being a prosecutor. I currently serve part-time as a prosecutor for the city of Inglewood and their municipal court right now. I also view it through the lens of a public defender. I was the only public defender for the city of Brighton up in their municipal court as well. And then finally, I also view it through a fourth lens, and that lens is of private counsel. I worked as an attorney for many, many years. And so I see it from all sorts of different lenses and different perspectives, and I think that to be a very huge asset if I were to be afforded this opportunity. As a judge, I started out as a magistrate with the Denver County Courts, and then moved on to actual judicial positions with the city of Aurora, city of Inglewood, town of Castle Rock, city of Brighton, and also Lone Tree as well. As a public defender, as I mentioned before, I served with the city of Brighton as well. As far as responsibilities go, obviously, in my judicial experience, there, those responsibilities are inherent. But also, as a prosecutor, excuse me, yes, excuse me, as a public defender up in Brighton, I was the sole public defender that was up there. I didn't have any paralegals. I didn't have any assistants. I was in charge of my entire personal caseload, from small stuff to more complicated issues up there as well. I was in charge of bringing my cases, preparing them for trial, preparing my subpoenas, preparing my witnesses. Conversely, I also do that currently right now in my role as prosecutor for Inglewood. Believe it or not, I am the only prosecutor, but I also don't have an assistant. I don't have any paralegals. I am in charge of all of my subpoenas. I'm in charge of witness preparation. I'm in charge of contacting my victims. I'm in charge of contacting my witnesses and doing those interviews as well. It's a tremendous amount of responsibility, but I've carried that quite well, I believe, both as a prosecutor and also as a public defender as well. Now, as to that fourth prong, that fourth lens that I view the municipal court system as private counsel, that also was unique. That was also very unique to me as well, because I handled a large volume of cases across the entire state of Colorado in a variety of different courthouses, courtrooms, municipal courts, federal courts, state courts, on up. Why I think that makes me unique, that experience, is because I had the opportunity in that role to observe the judiciary all across the state, whether it's out in Grand Junction, Garfield, Eagle County, come on down the I seventy corridor, further out in east, out to the town of Burlington, right on the border of Kansas, practice out there, up into northeast sections, up into Springfield. I've had to fly out several times out to Durango and practice in those courts. I have seen the practices of other members of the judiciary across our great state, and I've been able to identify practices that I think work well, and also practices that do not work well in that capacity. So I think I'm very unique in that regard with that experience. I bring that to the table here, and that is, again, why I say I believe I am the best candidate for the role of the presiding municipal judge. Also, in my endeavors to show myself to be that ideal candidate, I want to describe to you my ability to provide the services of the presiding judge as they've been explained in the RFP, specifically under the scope of work. My understanding from that scope of work, this courthouse operates generally Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursdays, and also, of course, bond hearings as they become necessary. I know I can be successful with that because I'm already doing it. I'm doing it as a judge, and I'm doing it as a prosecutor, and I did it also as a public defender as well. Obviously, I've got more than five years experience in criminal law. I believe I'm coming up on, I'm on my seventeenth year right now. But I've also got other experience in other areas as well. I've got that experience in criminal law, and one of the benefits of being in those positions, like prosecutor, like public defender, or court-appointed counsel, you quickly get handed a case, and oftentimes, you can be told, we're having a hearing right here, right now. So in order to be able to effectively handle those sorts of cases that you just get handed, you have to have a command of the law. You have to have a command of the rules of evidence. You have to have a command of criminal procedure. And I have all of that, and I can, and I can absolutely perform. Also, in that scope of work, I want to describe to you that I currently work very well with court administration and court staff specifically over in Inglewood. Obviously, I have my judging duties, but I'm going to use Inglewood as an example. I told you before, I'm the sole prosecutor. And so even though law is adversarial by design, I work very well with our court staff in a polite, courteous manner in order to address issues that we have, perhaps towards judicial efficiency, thought processes regarding other areas of efficiency and inefficiency. In fact, we meet probably about, I'd say probably about once every ten days as a group, myself, prosecutor, with our court administrator, our deputy court administrator, and also with our presiding judge as well. I believe in collaboration when it's appropriate. I believe in great communication as well. Like I said, law is adversarial by design, but it doesn't always have to be. Obviously, in my judicial duties over the last several years, I have obviously demonstrated myself to preside over court hearings in those court sessions, making legal decisions, listening to evidence, listening to witnesses, applying the law to each specific case and each individual person as well. It is absolutely paramount to me that I do uphold the principles of due process for all those that appear in front of me, whether I'm as judge, whether I'm as prosecutor, or even as defense counsel. And of course, it should go without saying, I think in my role as judge, I would have no problem whatsoever with adopting rules and other sorts of regulations, and if necessary, appointing any sort of referees and other administrating hearing officers. For those reasons, I again believe that I am the best candidate for this position. Furthermore, I want to describe my reliability, my character, and my integrity and judgment. And I think really to highlight that by way of example, you need to see what are my fruits, what are, what comes out of me. And I want to point you all in the direction on my resume of community involvement. I believe the community involvement chapter in my resume speaks the most towards that reliability, character, integrity, and judgment. That section, community involvement, really breaks down into two separate sections. On one hand, I've got a legal history of volunteerism. On the other hand, I have non-legal volunteerism as well. I'll highlight those right now. First and foremost, one of the projects that I'm working on right now is actually, I'm on the Board of Directors for Stride Community Health Center. And for those of you who were on my first interview, I completely neglected to point out that they're actually about a hundred yards over here. I know today I gave up six hours out of my day working with our Board of Directors volunteering over there. It's something near and dear to my heart. Additional non-legal volunteerism that I, that I have listed in that resume, my children go to Jeffco schools. But in my past, I, for a number of years, I actually volunteered with what was called then the Northwest Coalition for Better Schools, serving Denver Public Schools. We sought out funding for high school students for after-school tutors. That was our main goal at that time. In addition to that, I coached Denver high school students, I believe, for about two seasons for their mock trial teams, giving back to kids, showing them the legal system, and walking them through with the skills that I have. On the other hand, as I said before, my volunteerism also branches out into the legal realm as well, namely within the bar associations. For many, many years, I sat on the Board of Directors for the Hispanic Bar Association, held many different leaderships, leadership positions with that bar association with great success, had the opportunity to speak at the Capitol on behalf of the, on behalf of one particular piece of legislation. Also, served in leadership roles through the Colorado Bar Association on their nominating commission to appoint a new president of the bar association. We ended up choosing, in that year, Judge Terry Ruck Regal, who was made somewhat famous by presiding over the Kobe Bryant trial up in Eagle County. I also served with the Denver Bar Association as a representative to the Colorado Bar Association's Board of Governors. But really, I think of my legal volunteerism that really shows my character and my integrity is actually my service to the community by legal nights. And I don't know if any of you all are familiar with what that is. Legal nights is where I, we, my other colleagues, gave up hours out of our evenings, and we helped impoverish people, people that didn't normally have access to justice, people that didn't know any lawyers, people that couldn't, most certainly couldn't afford attorneys. We would volunteer probably about three, three and a half hours once a month in the evenings to help these folks. And one of the other benefits to helping these folks is I'm fully bilingual, and written and spoken Spanish. And a lot of these folks in our community, especially those that need help, are these folks from those backgrounds. And so I was able to interface with them and give my time to them and be able to help them find solutions to their problems and give back to my community in that regard. These organizations, in my opinion, I think reflect my heart for the community, the heart for impoverished students, and then, of course, as I said before, my entire legal community as a whole. It's reflected in those many hours that I spent on nights, weekends, and just like today, taking time out of my own personal weekday schedule to go volunteer over at Stride. There's a saying, and I've known it for years. It says, if you see a turtle on a fence post, you know one thing, one thing. That is, that turtle did not get there by itself. I am that turtle. I did not get here by myself. Plenty of other people gave hours and hours of their time to me so I could be here today. It is my moral obligation to serve my community. It is my moral obligation to give back, so that way another turtle may be on that fence post. And I think when we come from a place of love, justice, kindness, gratitude, our world magically shifts in a positive way. And I think my volunteerism demonstrates that, and again demonstrates my reliability, character, integrity, and judgment as well. As I said before, I believe I'm the best candidate for this position. And in an effort to do that, I want to describe to you all how I envision working with stakeholders here in the city if I'm afforded this wonderful opportunity. I think from the beginning, what I would have to do is just get to the basics. I have to meet with those stakeholders, and I have to do something that a lot of lawyers are not used to doing. That is, stop talking. I need to listen. I need to learn. I need to understand the foundational community needs, and then be able to go from there. So that, I think, is my first step. But I also need to be balanced in a certain regard as well. And I need to be balanced, and I need to be mindful of the separation of powers as well, as a member of the judicial branch. That is, not to say at all that I would operate in a box, or that I would go into my chambers and close the doors and live in that vacuum. Absolutely not. I think really what it says is that I still need to communicate. I still need to collaborate. I need to attend meetings, but I also need to understand when it's appropriate for me to do so, and also when it's appropriate for me to step outside of those meetings and respect those separation issues. They ask for an example of what happens if judge notices something. We need to amend an existing ordinance or an existing statute. How might I handle that? Again, I'll go back to being mindful of the separation of powers. If I notice something, let's collaborate. Let's communicate. Talk to the stakeholders at play, understand the perspectives, and then turn it over to the appropriative, the appropriate legislative body, that being our city attorney's office. I can share my thoughts. I can comment, but I need to let them take over in that legislative role. But that's how I would approach that. Just simply communicate and understand where people are coming from. And again, in my efforts to show you all why I believe that I am the best candidate for the office of the presiding municipal judge here in Wheat Ridge, I want to share something with you that demonstrates why I believe that I am fit for this particular role. On a personal level, and I think it's important that you know this, I'm a father. I have three children, a rising twelve-year-old, a rising nine-year-old, and a very curious and adventurous two-year-old as well. I have a loving and supportive wife. And I think this is important for you all to understand, because I want you to know, I'm trying to leave a world that's better for my kids, for your kids, my grandkids. And that's easy to say if you don't have kids. It is, I'm obligated to do it now that I see a set of six little eyeballs that look at me every day. So I want you to know that motivation from my angle. I want to make the world a better place, our community's a better place, for our future. And in summation, another thing I want you to know about me that I believe that makes me fit for this particular role, I have a story, a mantra, and some of you've heard this before. Former federal judge here in Denver, Philip Figa, he passed away a number of years ago, unfortunately, very, very early. And when they were cleaning off his federal court bench, way high up, those federal court benches sit up hot, his law clerks found a sticky note, a sticky note that he had stuck to his bench right in front of where he sat. And that sticky note had his mantra that he read and saw every day when he was on that bench. And I, when I heard this and I read it, it stuck with me too. It essentially says to the judge, be patient, be humane, be firm, be polite, and very importantly, give all fair due process of law. For those reasons, Mayor, Mr. City Manager, council members, I believe I am the best candidate for the office of the municipal presiding judge. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Judge. Good to be here tonight. If there's any questions, it's time for questions. Do you have any questions?
Do your things. Do the thing. Do the thing that you're supposed to do. Yes. Thank you so much. Please describe for us the steps you take to stay current on the laws for which you have jurisdiction in municipal court.
Fantastic question. So one of the great things that I have, especially given the breadth of experience judicial and non-judicial as well across our Denver metro areas, that I have a great network of other judges as well, folks that serve in different capacities, with different bar associations. I regularly get updates, slip opinions emailed out, here's what's happening in the Court of Appeals now at this point. Of course, you have to read through and review the local municipal ordinances as well. That's a given. But paying attention to those changes in the law, to stay current, is absolutely imperative. I'm thankful to my colleagues who do that. And also, in addition to that, I still get emails from other folks as well, my contacts when I worked with Brighton's Public Defender's Office. I still get emails that explain different sorts of opinions as well that come from other courts, and just to stay up and abreast of the law as well. I get those, I would say, probably about once every three weeks. Of course, I have access to legal resources like Westlaw, LexisNexis, and utilize those when appropriate. And beyond that, really, I think it comes from working with bar associations as well, knowing what's going on in your legal community, knowing what those trends are. That's a huge reason why I've, why I had volunteered so many hours with our local bar associations. I think that's important for a judge to know and understand their legal community. And then, and then, of course, is just simply reading the law and staying abreast of it daily and being in practice. Hope that answered your question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for being here, Judge. What is your judicial philosophy or philosophy in general regarding sentencing in criminal cases?
Great question. I think we have to view it through a certain lens. My answer might be a little bit different if I were applying for the district court bench, where we're dealing with very heinous sorts of crimes that have the potential to have lifelong consequences, direct, direct lifelong consequences on, on an accused person. Here in the municipal court, our jurisdiction is simply limited to a one-year timeframe. So what that tells me, the decisions that we make here as far as it goes for sentencing, need to be viewed through that lens. Because, of course, and someone could give a maximum sentence of up to a year in county jail. But we also have to keep in mind, after a year, that individual is another member of our community, someone that we're going to see back out at the grocery store, walking their dog down the street. And so I like to try and view it through that. How can we build people up? How can we correct the issue? How can we rehabilitate? And of course, there is absolutely a time for a punitive sanction. But again, I, we need to be mindful of that limited jurisdiction, and are we causing more harm than good? I know one of the great things over in our Inglewood courthouse, where I served as judge and then now as prosecutor, associate judge, I should say, our presiding judge there has really done some great things. We have what we call a restorative justice program out there. I'm a huge supporter of it in my role as a prosecutor. Oftentimes, I see cases come before me that, it doesn't feel like the right thing to do as an attorney to saddle someone with a criminal conviction. Let me give you an example. Some folks come in, some teenagers and a couple adults, they have a fight out on a soccer field during a tournament, and they all get brought in. Now, these are ordinary folks, folks that have no, no history, criminal history whatsoever, juvenile that certainly had none. What is the utility in sanctioning one of them with a massive fine, or perhaps worst-case scenario, incarceration? Well, or could we get them to come to the table, sit down, talk about differences, understand how their decisions impacted their local community, and how to avoid winding them, winding back in, in the judicial system? So for that reason, when viewed through the lens of being community-driven and serving our community and understanding our jurisdictional limits, I like to take that rehabilitative approach when, when possible. Again, as I stated before, that does not exclude, under any circumstances, the need to be punitive. But I think we need to be measured with that. We need to be intelligent with it. We need to be compassionate. And like I said before, when I was talking about that mantra from Judge Figa, we need to be humane about it. That is my philosophy in regard to sentencing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Judge.
Describe a situation where you had to support a legal position that conflicted with your personal beliefs, and please tell us how you handled it.
I was a criminal defense attorney for many years. I feel like I was confronted with this issue on a daily basis. Understanding the rules of ethics, having a moral compass, understanding due process, understanding that under our constitution, folks are presumed innocent until proven guilty, and not letting my personal biases get in the way. Or also understanding that my personal beliefs, I also believe in due process. I also believe in the presumption of innocence. So just because I might be in a distasteful situation does not mean that I cannot do my job. So I think when viewed through that lens, it makes the job easier when understanding that as a lawyer and as a judge, that we are a servant, and we have to uphold the Constitution. Those things, presumption of innocence, due process, are absolutely at our core tenets and need to be respected. So I hope I answered your question.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stites, would you please ask question number four?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Judge, please describe what you have done to create a courtroom environment that is welcoming of inclusivity and diversity.
I, I think the best way I can describe this is taking a look at my experience on Aurora's bench. Aurora is unique in, and you see on my resume, I've been in a lot of other municipal courthouses. Aurora is incredibly unique in the, in the diversity of, of the folks that appear in front of us every day. We have a massive refugee population. I have never seen so many languages spoken in a courthouse. Typically, in most courthouses, I'm just used to Spanish and English usually being there. But there, I know last week, I had a Swahili, I had a Russian interpreter, French Creole. Why do I say that? It's difficult. It's difficult when I pull up a court file and I see a name that I really cannot pronounce, and how to try and provide some sort of culturally competent respect for the individual appearing in front of me, maybe just starts with asking, how, sir, ma'am, how do I pronounce your name? And I get corrected. And very often, I will say, thank you very much. I want to make sure that I give you the dignity of having your name pronounced correctly. That is something that I do quite regularly when I'm on the bench. And that, like I said, that happens overwhelmingly so in Aurora. Beyond that, I think, is just understanding that as a public servant and being on the bench, we're here as a servant of the people. And people come and it gets at all times, all shapes and sizes and everything. It is, it is a patchwork of different types of folks from different backgrounds, and understanding that these people are human too, just like me. They have families. They have needs. They have fears. They have anxieties too. And just to make sure that I, as I said before out of that mantra, afford all fair due process of law to everyone. That's how I believe that I have demonstrated diversity and inclusivity in my courtrooms is really just to be is really just to be, try and be as good of a human as possible.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver, would you please ask question number five?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Though you touched on this in your introduction, what should be the relationship between the municipal court, the mayor, and the city council? How would you deal with any potential conflicts between the three branches of government?
You're exactly right. Three branches of government, separation of powers. As I said before, that separation, I believe in collaboration when appropriate. I believe in communication, mutual respect amongst those branches of government. We're all working together, or I hope, working together with the same common goal, to serve our community in the best interest of that community. So how would I deal with any potential conflicts between the three branches of government? I think it goes back to communication ultimately. If you have any sort of strife, if we have any strife in our lives, do we get better by folding our arms up and huffing and puffing off? Or do we actually make advancements by, let's talk about it, let's identify the problem, let's find a solution, and let's move forward for the betterment of our community? So I think ultimately, from my perspective, if there was a conflict, let's talk about it. Come to the table, let's sit down, let's reason together, as far as that's appropriate with the separation of powers.
Thank you. Counselor Larson, would you please ask question number six?
Thank you, Mayor. Judge, in your career, what have you done to ensure the independence of the third branch?
For those of you that were around for my first interview, I have another mantra that I had memorized, and that mantra is essentially, it is the duty of the judiciary to state what the law is, not what the law should be. So as long as I view it within that lane, that doesn't prevent me from communicating. But ultimately, I need to respect the independence of the judiciary. I make those decisions as the judge. Ultimately, as the old saying goes, the buck stops here. I'll take in input, I'll listen to everyone. But ultimately, the judge has to be responsible for making that decision. But not just responsible for making the decision, because in making decisions, you're not going to satisfy everybody. You're not going to, someone's going to win, someone's going to lose. But what really helps the community is if the judiciary, if the judge can explain and make a record how they arrived at that decision, so that way that community member may say, "Look, I'm really upset today, I lost, but at least I understand the process and I respect how we arrived here." And hopefully, they walk away with a better feeling despite the fact that a decision was not made in their favor.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman, would you please ask question number seven?
Yes, thank you, and thank you for being here, Judge. It's nice to see you again.
Thank you.
How do you ensure you are making judicial decisions without regard to outside pressure?
I may have accidentally answered that in my last one to an extent, and I'll just go back to it. Making sure that, when sitting up on the bench, most folks never meet a president, most folks never meet a senator, congressman, or anything like that. Where do people come face-to-face with their government? They get a local ticket, and they come see the judge, they see their prosecutor, they see their government in action in that regard. So in order to make sure that I'm making those decisions without those outside pressures, I think it goes back to really making a record, a record that people understand and, like I said before, they can respect despite the fact that they might not be happy with that decision. And they're not feeling that their government is acting in some sort of biased or capricious way.
Thank you, Judge. I drew question number eight. What are the key trends in municipal courts that you've experienced in the past year, and how do you stay on top of these trends?
Sure. I think, oh boy, we got an interesting one here. Town of Rifle got sued by the ACLU. I don't know if any of you had heard about that, essentially dealing with, the penalties for certain sorts of crimes were harsher in municipal courts as opposed to if they would get charged in the state courts. And so essentially, what the ACLU was doing, they are suing, saying, "Hey, look, that's unfair, because if you got this ticket going over to the county court, you know, you'd be subject to 10 days or something." But if law enforcement wrote this ticket off in the municipal court, you're now suddenly faced with the potential of up to a year. So ACLU sues the Town of Rifle, and ultimately, Town of Rifle decided not to combat it. But as I understand it, it is still ripe for potential litigation out there, and I believe that that is, that is being dealt with by every municipality in the state, is how they're going to approach that. So that is a trend that's out there right now. I think some municipalities are approaching it in one way, and other municipalities are approaching it in another way. I know from my perspective over in Inglewood, we deal with it in another ways. We're being cautious with it. That's one of the biggest issues. So this is an ever-changing story that we're dealing with right now. Prior to that, I know one of the other big issues, and you may have seen it in the RFP, is when it gets to bonds, now we have new bonding rules. We have to see these folks a lot quicker. So now that requires that we have court on Sundays. And that is a recent trend that we've had, and I'm living that reality now, doing my work in Inglewood and Aurora. How do I stay on top of these trends? I think it goes back to what I said at the very beginning, is being active in the bar, being active in the community, being on these listservs where other judges, other lawyers are talking about it, and it's an open discussion. It would be difficult if I was not involved in these organizations, because I would hear about it maybe, maybe by rumor. Fortunately, ACLU lawsuits have not made its way over to the courthouses where I work at. I hope they never do. But yeah, we've heard about those things sort of through the grapevine, and you hear about those things by being involved in your community and knowing what's going on.
Thank you. Judge, that concludes the prepared questions we have. I will go around and see if any, if counselors have other questions. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I opened my email and saw we had questions, I had written them, some of mine, so I'm just going to ask one of the ones that I wrote. I was impressed to see that you're involved in Stride. I do understand that when, being a professional like Judge, that typically, oftentimes, you guys look to be involved in organizations that could potentially kind of boost your resume. I think community involvement is extremely important. I'm involved in several different community things besides practically volunteer time as counselor. All of our intensive sets. But what I, so my question is, once you were term on the Board of Directors at Stride, which it's pretty new, once it expires, once you term out, is there another role in the community that you are looking, that you are kind of eyeballing to pursue that's more on the community-driven, volunteer side?
No, there's not one that I'm currently eyeballing right now. You're right. I've been with them for about a year or so now with Stride, so I'm very much so one of the newer members over there. So, and I, to be fair, I don't see an end to it at this point in time. Is there a time when it could end? Certainly. And where my heart might take me at that point in time, I don't know. If you would have asked me two years ago, if I saw myself serving on the Stride board, I would have said, "What is Stride?" But they're wonderful, they provide an excellent service to the community. I know in my courthouse in Inglewood, we offer a lot of our folks, especially our transient community over there, because they provide access to quality healthcare, to especially those folks that are uninsured or underinsured or by state insurance as well. So, again, to answer your question, no, I don't see a particular direction where I might go, and that is largely because I'm still getting involved and learning my way through it.
Thank you. Yeah, I was assuming that they're Board of Directors by term limits, so.
I don't think so. I don't, I could be wrong.
Thank you.
Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So you had mentioned that you, that you're a family man. I'd like to know, like, what you do outside of work, like, if you have any passions or hobbies that you're involved in?
The hugest thing is going to be my children. You obviously already know that. When, on the rare opportunity that I am, I wouldn't even say opportunity, I don't view it as a, on a rare moment where I'm not with my family. I like monster stories, I like scary stories. It helps me forget that I'm a lawyer, it helps me forget the traumas that I see in court. It provides a nice distraction. But again, that's a rare moment when that happens, and it's, in the course of the last year, has become even more rare lately, as my two-year-old is now fully mobile and into everything.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver.
I just wanted to verify this. I think you said it earlier. You are completely bilingual, written, conversational. Great. Thanks.
Counselor Larson, did you have a question?
I did. Thank you, Mayor. Judge, would you just discuss, as long or as briefly as you like, the responsibilities that would come with being municipal judge here in Wheat Ridge and the other legal activities that you're involved in? How would you manage that time?
Fantastically, I think is the answer. And here's why I say that, okay? By pure happenstance, Wheat Ridge operates the same days where I'm physically present in Inglewood, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So that would be an easy transition. I could just leave that and just jump back over here. I could probably serve the city of Wheat Ridge on those days, and then with my other activities, I'm open to judging in Aurora or any of those other courthouses, Monday, Friday, and hopefully not every Sunday. Still want some time with my family. But my judging in those other areas would happen on Mondays, Fridays, and Sundays. So for that reason, I think I'd be able to handle it fantastically. It'd be a very easy transition.
Counselor Weaver, did you have anything? Oh, I'm sorry, it was, excuse me.
Mr. Judge, this is something I'm really interested in. Can you talk a little bit more about the legal nights that you refer to, that you get to participate in?
Yes. So when I was doing those, and I stopped doing those probably about three or four years ago, frankly, I only have so much time, and especially with a new child. So I volunteered at two separate locations, one more central downtown, that was Centro de San Juan Diego, and then also over at Mi Casa Resource Center, that's over in southwest Denver as well. At those legal nights, functionally, how it works is, you get a blast of an email that gets sent out saying, "Hey, look, everybody, to all your attorneys, and also if you have any other legal staff, court staff, anyone else that wants to volunteer," I shouldn't say court staff, I was at a law firm at that time, "if you're paralegal or someone is able to come on down." So we would drive on down, and you don't really know super far in advance how many folks are going to show up, but pretty consistently, it was very, very busy. There's a high need out in the community for these things. So you show up, and over at San Juan Diego, it tended to be almost like an auditorium sort of setting, kind of like a gymnasium. And so it's a big room, you got tables set up, and they ask you, you know, "Hey, look, if I got any Spanish-speaking attorneys, boom, come over to see me, I've got only Spanish speakers, so they can help you. If you have an interpreter that, if you don't speak Spanish, maybe we can pair you up with an interpreter." So we'd come up, call someone's name, see the general topic as far as what they needed. Maybe they needed help with an eviction, maybe they needed help with a child custody issue. It wasn't very typical that we would see any sort of criminal issues pop up, because those folks were already being served by public defenders or court-appointed counsel. So it largely centered on other areas, civil matters, family matters, and we would advise on that. Meet with them, probably typically, typically, probably about, between about 15 and 30 minutes each, we would probably each handle probably four or five individuals each night, depending upon whatever their legal issue was. And we walk them through it, we show them the resources. If we knew, the judicial branch, the state judicial branch provides a wealth of documents online, self-help forms, or a myriad of different things. Show them how to access that, show them the instructions, print them out, and tell them what they need to do. And I neglected to mention this before, I think I did at least, when I was discussing why I believe I'm the best candidate for this position. My experience, granted, this is municipal law here, okay? My experience has not always just been municipal law, and it's not always just been criminal law as well. I've done my fair share of family law, divorce, custody issues, civil lawsuits, take your pick, juvenile cases. The point in bringing that up is, with that experience, you can see the intersectionality of a lot of areas of law when you're applying and making decisions in the municipal court. As the judge, if I'm imposing a protection order, how might this impact the victim and the defendant as they go forward with child rearing, child custody issues? How might that, how might they be impacted based off of an allegation of X, Y, Z? I encounter this all the time. Is DHS involved? Do you have child protective services in your life? Are you already receiving services that show me that you're taking steps at being rehabilitated? That breadth of experience from handling civil stuff, lawsuits, family law stuff, juvenile stuff, I think just makes me a better jurist on the bench, because I can see those other issues. Now, if I only practiced, and it's just fine if you do, if I only practiced just in the municipal courts and not just in criminal law, I would be blind to a lot of these other areas that I just don't have any experience in. I wouldn't know to think those things, I wouldn't know to ask those questions. So I hope that answers your question and gives you a little bit more as well.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any programs that you have seen or that you'd like, you know, like a council to support?
Really, I think in the municipal court system, and it works fantastically in the municipal court system. I think my answer may be different if we were, like I said, in the state court, county court, or district court. The restorative justice program, I think, really, really is of great benefit to our communities, because a lot of these folks that we have in front of us in the municipal court, they're not hardened criminals, they are not, they're our neighbors, they're our friends, they're our families, they're the people that we see out cutting their lawn. And wow, they just happened to collide, perhaps, with law enforcement and now in the judicial system. That does not mean that that is what defines them. So I think the restorative justice program is fantastic in the municipal setting. I think that's great. Another thing that I love that Judge Jefferson over in Inglewood has done, he set up, we have a court resource navigator, fantastic individual. He's actually an attorney, but he's now working in a non-attorney role for three days out of the week with us. He helps us with our transient population. We have the light rail line that pops down there, and we get a lot of folks coming out of Denver, and I know, you know, just south of here, down in Colfax, we've got the light rail line too. It brings a lot of those populations out, populations that lost an ID, their bag got stolen while they're sleeping on the street, and they can't get a job because they don't have an ID, they don't know how to do it. Maybe they had Medicaid at one point in their time, in their life, and they now no longer have it because they just don't know the process, how to get it again. Do you know where to find food banks, resources such as that? And it's not meant to be a punishment to meet with our court resource navigator, rather it's to empower them and to hopefully have them not be in a position where they're returning to see us in the courthouse again, because I'm not going to change that behavior by fining someone 200 bucks when they don't have it. Let's empower them, let's build them back up. So to answer your question, I think those are two great programs. I think it would be beneficial for perhaps the city of Wheat Ridge just to perhaps explore such things.
Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, I was just going to ask you, our previous judge, Judge Randall, and Kirsten had started a homeless court and working with our homeless population. Does that sound like something you would be interested in?
Absolutely.
Okay, cool. Thank you. My other question was, you've mentioned that you've worked at a couple different levels of the judiciary branch. Do you see yourself, or how long do you see yourself staying in a municipal job like Wheat Ridge, or do you see yourself kind of moving on to?
For the foreseeable future. Long-term, I think is the answer. Look, I'm not applying to any other state court positions, that's just not where my heart is right now. My experience is from municipal court, my experience is also in state court, but because I've had that experience, I know where my heart is, and that's where I'm at right now. I don't see myself making a state court application anytime soon. anytime soon. That's not what's on my heart. That's not where I feel I'm being pulled. So that's my answer. I can't see it anytime soon.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Judge, I think we've had a great round of prepared questions and off-the-cuff questions. It may be time for your closing argument.
Closing argument.
Or any questions that you might have a box. Let me leave an opening.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the jury, otherwise known as counsel, Mr. Mayor, city manager, city attorney. At the conclusion of this case here today, I ask you one thing, one thing. Appoint me presiding municipal court, Judge. You've listened to the evidence. You've listened to my arguments. You have all the information you need in order to make the decision. I'm confident you'll make the right decision. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I'm the best candidate for this.
Thank you very much, Judge. We appreciate you being here. We are going to, we have another candidate. We're going to deliberate, I believe, after that. And we'll see where the decisions lie.
Fantastic. Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you for donating your time.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may, I believe our next one starts in 10 minutes. Do we have a quick bathroom break time?
We will take... I think, you know, I... ...interviews for the municipal judge position here in the city of Wheat Ridge. We're pleased to have Judge Paul Bassel with us. Judge Bassel, I will turn over the floor to you for an opening statement and to give us a little information about yourself.
Thank you. Yeah, we got a memo from Corey Seitz kind of outlining the process tonight, so I had some little opening remarks. First, thank you for this opportunity. And as stated, my name's Paul Bassel, and good evening to everybody. I have been your interim judge since January 1st, when Judge Randall retired. I've been your relief judge since 2016. Relief judge fills in when the judge can't sit, for whatever reason. He's on vacation or he has to recuse himself from a case, or he had some meeting he had to be at, and he would call me in and fill in. I'm also your administrative hearing officer, which means code violations. The weeds are too high, your yard's a mess, things like that. It's a civil end of this where they issue a fine. And I've been, the last month or two, well, two months, I've been the liquor hearing officer also. And that's been a new experience. When I was in Firestone, I was a presiding judge for 17 years at that location. And there was an overlap also. I was also the judge in Westminster. I started out as a relief judge there, filling in for the judges. And that turned into once a week, and that turned into 32 hours a week as the associate judge, where we did many trials and lots of jury trials and a lot of contested cases in Westminster for various reasons. So I got lots of experience doing that. I'm very active in the Colorado Municipal Judges Association. I was the president for a year. I've been on the board three times. Active on their listserv, answering questions from other judges when issues come up, and mentor to several judges. They'll call or send me a text when they need help or advice or assistance on some issue. I've been, I'm the author of several chapters of the, what we call the judge book. It's a binder, I don't know, it's got like 14 chapters or something, running the gamut of common areas of law that judges may need to look up on occasion. Reasonable suspicion and sentencing and just lots of different chapters. I've made several presentations at continuing education programs, including sentencing and when you're allowed to have a jury trial in municipal court, and recent decisions, we call it. At every judge conference, and there's two of them a year, we have a session on recent appellate decisions that come up in the last six months, and we talk about those and how it affects municipal courts and what we should be doing. So, and that was a challenge. That was a lot of work. I've been on the Supreme Court Rules Committee for municipal rules the last year, I guess it's been. We're redoing some of the rules. I've been on the speedy trial committee, subcommittee, and I wrote the new rule on bail. Now, none of this has been approved yet. It all has to go through the Supreme Court first, but I wrote the rule and it got discussed and talked about at the committee and all that got approved to be sent up to the Supreme Court. So I guess where I'm going with all this is I've got lots of experience. I've been doing this for 28 years. In July, it would be 28 years. You start off doing a little bit and you end up doing a lot, so. Some of the other things I'd like to mention, and some of this is on my resume, of course, but I've been a representative of the Colorado Municipal League Policy Committee for a couple of years. Now, I think I covered all of that, that I wanted to cover. So that's sort of my background here, my qualifications. And I'll add to that, I enjoy working in Wheat Ridge as the relief judge, and then again, since January, as the judge. The schedule's a little challenging. We generally work, we have court Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and most Thursdays. But you also have to be available on Monday and Friday to do prisoners at 3:00. And so you have to be available on weekends in cases of warrant or something that needs to be signed, although that doesn't happen very often. You're basically on call 24/7. And that's a little bit of a challenge at times, but it's been fine. We've worked through it, and with the help of Kirsten and her staff, we seem to be getting everything covered. The next part of the email I got said I should discuss my ability to provide the services, and that's sort of where that was going. I have been doing it. And I've done it as the relief judge, and when Judge Randall was on vacation for a week or two, I handled it then. And I've handled it since January when I started as the interim judge. And that's just doing it here. I've been doing it, again, I've been doing it for 28 years with, I think, successfully. I have a definition of being a successful judge, and and that is you take every case individually, and you do the best you can, and apply the law, and treat everybody fairly. And that's, to me, a successful case. Now, having said that, when I do that, somebody is usually disappointed. The defendant's disappointed, or the prosecutor's disappointed, or the officer's disappointed, or the witness is disappointed, or the victims are disappointed because you're ruling usually in favor of one person and not the rest. But I try to apply the law evenly and fairly to everybody as best I can, as I understand the law, and that's why my definition of success, so. Next subject that was in the email was describe your reliability, character, integrity, and give examples. Now, that's the one I have a problem with. And that's because I find situations like this a little difficult. I don't like blowing my own horn. And I know that's what you're supposed to do at an interview. So what I did instead was I had, I listed many references for people that could speak to those issues for me because I'm uncomfortable doing it myself, but I believe, I'll say, I believe I have all those things. I have a great judicial demeanor. I don't get upset when people start yelling and screaming. I put an end to it. But that's not the way you handle things. When I was younger, I may have handled it a little differently, but now that I've, with all this experience, you realize you let people make a record. You let them say what they're going to say, and maybe you'll agree with it, and maybe you won't. But you explain why you ruled the way you ruled. And hopefully, everybody goes out, and maybe they didn't win, but they understand. They said, well, at least I got a fair hearing. So. So reliability, character, integrity, all those things, I think I've got in spades. But again, I'm comfortable going too forth with that. Demonstrate my fitness for the role. I think the best way to demonstrate that was to, that I do the job. And I sent an email out to counsel and the mayor asking to come and watch because I think that's the best way to demonstrate my ability to do the job is come and watch me do it. And I know one of you did. Thank you. And my ability, my demonstrate, I've been doing it for 28 years. And I don't know what else to say other than that's how you do the job. You show up every day, and you do the job, and you treat everybody fairly. And you do one case, and you pay attention to that case, and then when that's done, you move on to the next case, and you try to treat them just as fairly. And you apply the law, whether you agree with it or not. And I, for general, generally, I don't disagree with it, but there's been an occasion or two when that's happened. And I noticed that was one of your questions. That's why I mentioned that. Next, working relationship with stakeholders, example of ordinance changes. Okay. First thing I do when I, well, when I got the job in Firestone, the first thing I did was I had a meeting with the court administrator. And then when I was done meeting with her, I went down and had a meeting with the chief of police and to try to develop a relationship. And you cooperate with these, with your stakeholders. You talk to them. You communicate with them. There is ethical rules about some of that stuff. You can't talk specifically about upcoming cases, but you can talk about cases in your procedures in general. And I had a great relationship with all my chief of police from Dan Montgomery in Westminster to David Montgomery in Firestone. Now, I've resisted talking to the chief here because I was just the interim judge, but I will be doing that if I get the job. But you develop a relationship. You sit down, talk, you cooperate, you cooperate, and you communicate. Here's what I like. That's what they would like. What can we do to make it better? How can we improve? How do we avoid any errors and mistakes? We work on that. And so when an issue does come up, I can call somebody and say, hey, this problem arose. How do we deal with it next time? And Kirsten can vouch for that. Because we just had one recently. But it wasn't anybody's fault. It's just the new community court, we had some technical issues about how it was getting done. And, but we've got it fixed, I think, so. But that's the way you solve a problem. You sit down and you have a meeting, and Kirsten leads those meetings pretty well, I'll have to say. She says, Judge, can we have a meeting when you're done this morning? And so, of course, what are we talking about? Oh, okay, yeah, we need to have a meeting about that. You're right. Oh, okay, yeah, we need to have a meeting about that, you're right, so. And that's, and we got the people that were involved sitting around the table and we figured it out and how to do it better next time, so. Nobody's rights were violated or anything, it wasn't anything like that, so. Next on the list, working relationship, oh, I did that one. Share something, oh, talk about ordinances, I forgot, we didn't talk about ordinances. On several occasions in Firestone and in Westminster, we, I had some suggested ordinance, ordinances changes that I asked for, I think we need to change this. And then we had some others that other people were suggesting. And once again, cooperation. We sat down, we talked about it. There was one in Westminster, I recall, we had a meeting with the assistant city attorney who was drafting the ordinance and he had this draft and I said, well, you forgot mens rea and you forgot a couple of things and they put that in there and we got, mens rea is intent. Did you intend to commit the crime? And he didn't have that in the ordinance and I pointed that out and he fixed that and he put in, knowingly violated the law, so. That's one of the definitions for mens rea, so. That's one example. I had others where other people were wanting to ordnance, their new ordinances and ordinance changes. And what we did, we sat down and we read through them and we said, I'm okay with that or I'm not okay with that, or I changed this a little bit. I don't want to get too involved in a legislative process, that's your job, but I can throw in my tune and sense worth when, and say, wait a minute, we need, we need mens rea on this ordinance. Oh, and the city attorney says, you're absolutely right, we need to do that, so. So my examples are practical ones where we sit down and talk ahead of time and then, then I would show up at the city council meeting, we had study session and with, at the meetings when we're, when they're voting on these things, to be there if they had questions, which didn't usually happen, but it can. So that's how I participated in that. And I'll point out, there are some ethical rules about getting involved in things like that, so. We have some issues sometimes and I try to avoid those, of course. Then we've got, the next question I've got is, share something to demonstrate fitness. Probably the most glaring issue with fitness is when you run into or have difficult people in front of you in court. Defendants are upset or witnesses upset or they start demonstrating that, they get a little loud maybe. And my fitness is to try to diffuse the situation, de-escalate. Because sometimes it's hard to even understand what their point is when they're being upset, so. People talking over each other, it just gets out of hand sometimes and we have to stop that real quick. And so you try to de-escalate and explain what's going on and you do so calmly and you don't raise your voice and yell and make it worse. You calmly say, wait a minute, folks, there's, there's an issue here, let's do this a little differently. And explain what's going on and how, what you expect and what the process should be, Sometimes another demonstration of fitness, we get a busy docket. That hasn't happened here too often the last six months. But when you get a busy docket, you want to move people in and out and they don't want to sit here and wait all day, so the pressure's on. But on the other hand, everybody's case has to be heard, it has to be heard fairly. And I like to take an extra few minutes with juvenile defendants because they're the ones you can probably make a difference on. Somebody here for their speeding ticket, they don't need a lecture, I don't think, unless it's really bad, which we get occasionally. But for the most part, I like to spend a couple extra minutes with the juvenile defendant. I'll ask them when we're doing this and I say, well, what did you learn from this experience? You know, and I want them to think about what they, and I'll ask them, what would you do differently next time? I'll ask mom and dad that are here with their child. I'll say, has there been any juvenile, or has there been any non-judicial punishment? Is the way I say it. And I'll usually get, oh, we grounded him, or we took his phone away, or, excuse me, things like that. Because when I hear answers like that, I said, all right, parents are on top of this. I don't need to be too crazy about all this. We don't need to hit them harshly with the sentence because parents are on top of it. It's when I get the parents that aren't on top of it, that's, that's when we start talking about probation and some other supervising things that they might need. Let's send them to a Better Choices class. Let's do something where they can figure out what they did is actually wrong, so. So I hope that fits my category of fitness. So in conclusion to my comments, and I have 38 years' experience and knowledge as a lawyer and 28 as a judge, I'll throw in that I also had two years working at the Adams County DA's office when I was at law school as an intern. So I've got, we didn't prosecute any cases as an intern, but we did some stuff, but, so I've got that side, I've got the private practice side and I've got lots of judge experience, so. I've been on all three sides. In my private practice, I did a, a lot of criminal cases and family law cases because I wanted to go to court, because my ultimate goal was to become a judge. And you don't necessarily get to be a judge doing probate cases because they don't go to court very often. And so that's the, that's the work I chose to do. So I've got lots of experience doing all, doing lots of court things from all sides. So I hope to serve as your municipal judge for the next several years. And this is not some stepping stone for me. This is what I want to do. I'm not looking for some other job or move up the state court or anything like that. This is, I like municipal court and that's what I want to do, so. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Judge. We appreciate you being here. We have some prepared questions and we've assigned those to certain counselors to ask. Counselor Snell, would you please ask question number one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Judge, for being here. First question, and you touched on this a little bit, but can you describe for us the steps you take to stay current on the laws for which you have jurisdiction in municipal court?
Well, first thing is, I stay abreast of legislative developments. I'll check their website during sessions. And part of that is because we have informal municipal judges meetings here in Jefferson County. The Jefferson County judges get together, Lakewood and Orvada. And we talk about these laws. And so we, we take a position, so to speak. What do we want to do? What should we do to convince somebody to change this or vote no or vote yes? And so we, we stay on top of all this stuff, all the legislative things. And then when the session's over, which just was over a couple of weeks ago, I'll go on the website and see what the governor signed and what he didn't sign. The one bill that affected us this year was a bond bill. They raised the, there are certain cases, charges for which you're entitled to a, they call a non-monetary bond. In other words, a personal recognizance bond. So you get out of jail without paying any money. They, and it, law used to be if it was $50 or less for shoplifting or criminal mischief, it was an automatic personal recognizance bond. They raised that to $300 this year. So it has some effect on us, but it's, compared to what they've been doing to us the last several years, that's, that's nothing. So we, we didn't make too much noise this year, so. But that's the legislative side of it. For the case law side of it, I have all the bookmark websites, US Supreme Court, 10th Circuit Court, US Colorado Supreme Court, Colorado Court of Appeals. And they all come out with cases usually weekly. And all, on Tuesday, the Supreme Court announces their cases, I'll go on their website on Wednesday and see what their case has said, if it's any important changes. And I'm usually the one putting it on the judge's listserv, you need to read this case is a big change because I do keep up with it. So in that sense, staying current, I'm probably one of the more current people there are. I actually pay attention to this stuff. I don't wait for somebody else to tell me it's changed, I look and see if it has changed, so. Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Hoppy, would you please ask question number two?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Judge, for being here tonight. What is your judicial philosophy or philosophy in general regarding sentencing in criminal cases?
I actually wrote the chapter in the judicial, the judge book on sentencing. That just goes over the legal stuff, though. It doesn't really go into philosophy so much. But I'm very, very up on all the sentencing laws. The philosophy, you know, I'm not sure, you start off as a judge with a philosophy, you just sort of develop it over time. And really, I can't, can't say a sentence, here's my philosophy, it's not that simple. Other than to say, I learned when I was in college studying legal scholars from the past in a couple of my government classes. Plato, of all people, we're going far, that far back. He's quoted as saying in his book, The Republic, he said, "The definition of justice is treating everybody the same." And so that's sort of an overarching philosophy that I have. So I try to keep that in my mind, everybody, everybody's treated the same and that keeps you out of trouble with any diversity issues and things like that. Everybody's the same. You try to teach, treat everybody with respect. So that's, it sort of flows from that Plato quote, it flows, your philosophy flows. But for sentencing specifically, I think it's, every, every case is different, every person is different. The person that comes in on their first ever speeding ticket should be treated differently than the, than the person coming in on their 37th theft conviction. There's, it's got to be different because that person hasn't learned to stop stealing yet. Somebody gets a speeding ticket, it's not the, the end of the world. I'm afraid to ask, how many of you have had a speeding ticket? Okay, I have two. It's been a long time, but I've had one, I've had them too. Okay. So you treat it differently, every case is different and every person's different. But what I've done is, and I followed the, I've done this before, but I followed Judge Randall's schedule, we call it, of if you had a traffic ticket and it was a four-point ticket and it was pled down to this much, this is how much to fine us. And you've had, if you've had another ticket in the last two years, we have to fine another $30 or $40. And if there's an accident involved, we have to fine a little bit more. And so there's a, there's a schedule there. And that way, everybody's treated the same, so. There've been some times where I've thought about that, where I'd like to be able to, for somebody's first ticket, usually they're 17 years old and it's their first time they've been in court, it's their first ticket, I wouldn't mind giving them a little bit of break and say, it's your first ticket, take a couple bucks off. And then on the other hand, when I get somebody with a horrible driving record, but it hasn't been in the last couple of years, maybe we should raise that a little bit. But for now, at least, I'm, I'm sticking with Judge Randall's schedule, okay. So, and then the sentencing, that's traffic stuff. And I try to do the same in the criminal area, I try to, the prosecutor has a system where here's your plea bargain and I'm recommending this. And it's, she has that same sort of schedule mentality, so we're treating everybody the same, here's what I think the sentence should be. And I have on occasion deviated from it, I must admit, because I thought she was being too harsh on occasion, I thought she was being too easy on occasion, so. And I would tell that to the defendants, I said, your plea bargain's for five days in jail, but I think you deserve more. And I'll tell them that, so, before they say guilty or not guilty or whether they want a trial date. And I said, I'm, I'm looking at your criminal history here and I think, I had a guy last week, had been to Department of Corrections three times and she's offering him five days in jail. I said, no, that's not right. This guy's a career criminal lawyer and I don't think that's right, so. So everybody's different, every case is different, but I try to be fair and consistent, okay.
Thank you. Counselor Ohm, would you please ask the third question?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Judge.
Sure.
Describe a situation where you had to support a legal position that conflicted with your personal beliefs and tell us how you handled it.
It hasn't happened very often. And the reason for that is, I think I love the law. And even though I may not have been the one that wrote it and I may have written it differently, I follow the law. So in a, in a rarer situation where I don't agree with what the law said, and it's happened, or it's, in this case, the facts in this case just doesn't quite fit the ordinance, I still, I, I fall back on what the law says. It just, separation of powers. You guys write the law, I adjudicate it, you tell me what the law is. Now, sometimes I have to interpret some of that, especially when lawyers come in and say, A and B and C and D and E, and the one lawyer says this and the other lawyer is reading the same statute, says it's completely different and, and I have to read it for myself and interpret what it really means. And it, sometimes that's harder than you would think. But there've been a few occasions where you wish, I was, I wish I was at the committee hearing so I could hear the, what was said and what the intent was because it's not always 100% clear, but I do my best to try to just interpret what the law says, what the words actually mean. So I fall, to answer your question, I'll fall back on what the law says, not what I feel about it.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Stiles, question four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Judge, please describe what you have done to create a courtroom environment that's welcoming of inclusivity and diversity.
Okay. I think I touched on that a little bit already, but the first thing is, when you take the bench, clerk says, please rise, and you come in with a smile on your face and say, please have a seat, thank you very much. Try to put everybody at ease a little bit because everybody's nervous and they don't want to be there, especially if you've never been to court before. And so you try to put everybody to ease. And then what I do is, I say, I have this orientation speech, basically. And I say, I'm going to call your name, you're going to come up to the podium and we're going to talk about what you've been charged with and you can ask me questions about that. And if, don't be afraid to ask questions and I'm going to tell you what you could be sentenced to, don't panic if I tell you you can go to jail for a year, that doesn't mean I'm going to put you in jail for a year. A lot of our ordinances, it's 364 days. And I, so I, again, try to put people at ease a little bit. And then I'll say, here are your four choices today. You can plead guilty, we'll talk about your penalty and I'll give you a chance to make a statement. A lot of people want to tell me all about it, some people don't want to say anything. And I say, or you can plead not guilty and we'll talk about a trial date, or you can ask for a continuance, a delay, so you can get a lawyer for some other good reason, or you can have a meeting with the prosecutor to talk about a plea bargain on your case. She might give you a break. And I say, you want to talk to the prosecutor, don't you? And I nod my head, yes. And so that's what most people end up doing. Because sometimes that's the best outcome for the case is everybody's happy. There's a punishment involved, but there's a conviction involved unless they go to trial or it gets dismissed for some reason. But like most of life, sometimes a compromise is the best way to handle things. So in my, where I'm going with this is I try to make the court as welcoming as I can, but it's still court and people are still nervous. And as far as the diversity inclusively, everybody's Mr. and Mrs. Sometimes I'll call the child by the first name because I don't want to call them Mr. Smith when Mr. Dad, Mr. Smith's standing next to them, but everybody's treated with respect. I told this to the- I told this to the committee that nominated me for, to be here tonight. I grew up in a mining country, where there's a vast diversity of people, from all kinds of, it usually was second generation when I was growing up, or third even, but all kinds of people came in to work the mines. And so I grew up with all kinds of ethnicities. And everybody, as far as I was concerned, they're just people. They're just my classmates. They're my friends. They were just people. Whether they went to that church or that church, it didn't matter to me, so.
Thank you. Counselor Weaver, would you please introduce question five?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Judge, for being here tonight. What should be the relationship between the municipal court, the mayor, and the city council? How would you deal with any potential conflicts between the three branches of government?
Separation of powers. Sounds like that question is asking me about. And I asked this to the nominating committee, as to what council would expect from me, how, how much participation they wanted from me. And then, and everybody may have their own ideas about that, but first of all, there should be a relationship. But there are ethical rules that I have to follow. For example, if somebody came up to me, if one of you came up to me and said, "My constituent got a charge yesterday, and I don't think it's right." No, that's, that's against the rules. I can't talk to you about a pending case. Because if I do, I'm recusing myself, and we're bringing in another judge. Because that's not the way this works. It's a separation of powers. So, in that sense, we should have cooperation. We should have participation. We should have a relationship. In the past, when I was the presiding judge in Firestone, I didn't do much in Westminster, because I was just the associate judge. I did a little bit of it, but in Firestone, what I would do is, we had a yearly, annual meeting with, with council, and I would present our report from the year before. We had this many cases. We had this many trials. We had, we made this much money, that kind of stuff. And all that was prepared by the court administrator, but I was the one presenting it to council. So, I was up there at least once a year in front of council, and they would ask questions. "Well, what about this ordinance? And what about that ordinance?" And we would talk about that. And also, when there was an ordinance affecting the court in front of council, I would appear. And just in case they had questions, and I would say that. "I'm only here if you have questions." And on occasion, they did, and then most of the time, they didn't. I still remember one of the council members up in Firestone, we were, we were mending an ordinance that involved missiles, and they got a kick out of that. It basically means throwing rocks and things like that, but the, the title of it was missiles. And that became a little bit of a chuckle. And I had to explain what missiles were, because, yeah. I, I still remember that, because everybody was chuckling about it. But that's my example. I think we should have a relationship, and it should be as much as you want it to be. I don't think I need to be at every city council meeting. Does anybody feel like I need to be at every city council meeting? But when something comes up, I should be there. And you let Kirsten know, or you let somebody else know to give me the word, to send me an email that says, "We've got something coming up. Would you show up at the meeting, and I'll be here." Yeah, I think that's important.
Thank you. Counselor Larson, would you please ask question number six?
Thank you, Mayor. Judge, in your career, what have you done to ensure the independence of the third branch?
Interesting philosophical question. I think it's, it's a different higher up you go in court than it is municipal court. But independence of the judiciary, of course, is one of our founding functions of this, of our government. And as I just addressed in the previous question, I think it's important, if somebody comes up and says, "My constituent's complaining about something. If it's a pending case, I can't, I can't talk to them." And that's how we stay independent. You follow the rules of ethics. Some of the things I've done to ensure that, first, I read Justice Sandra Day O'Connor's book on the subject when, after she retired, a very interesting book. If you haven't read it, it's worth reading. It's twenty years old now, or something like that, but and I, I agree with just about everything she said in the book. So, it's hard to be independent sometimes. I mean, everybody comes into life with their own feelings and, and opinions. But you follow the law. As the judge, you follow the law, no matter what your feeling or opinion is. That's what I try to do. So, what have I done to ensure that? I've had, I've stopped more than one person that's saying, "You can't talk to me about that. It's a pending case." That's just one example of how that happens. I guess indirectly, we do it through the Municipal Judges Association also. For example, at CML, your conferences, I don't know if you, any of you attended the presentations that we've done down there regarding judicial independence. We haven't done that one in a couple of years, three or four years. But we'll have a conference on that every occasion, to remind people that what the, what council should be doing and shouldn't be doing with the judges, and vice versa. And, and we'll have those education programs at our meetings, at our conferences. What, what do you do when the mayor comes up and says, "A, B, and C." Judge, Mayor, I can't do that. I'm sorry. Please stop. We have, we have rules about that, so. And not everybody wants to hear that, of course, but once you explain what's going on, they, most people will agree, you know? They'll say, "Yep, I agree with that." Sorry, sorry, didn't mean to stick in a bad place. I've had that reaction. So, directly, not a lot. Indirectly, we do a lot, would be answering the question.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman, would you please ask a question number seven?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Judge, for being here. You've kind of touched on it in a few of your questions, but how do you ensure you are making judicial decisions without regard to outside pressure?
Well, first of all, you don't let it. You don't let any outside pressure. There's internal pressure sometimes, that I give myself, but you, you don't let outside pressure. It happens. How about a great example? I was appointed by you guys to do the referendum petition for the auxiliary dwelling units. Okay? And I know there was, some citizens didn't like that law, and then there was the council that passed this law, and so I had internal pressure. But what I did was, I followed the law. And that's, that's how I handled it. I did the math, that we had a hearing, and it's still up on appeal. I've heard, I heard it might come back to us. But, but we have new legislation, too, that just got passed, and I don't know how that's gonna affect that. We'll see, because we're home rule. So we can say, "We're not gonna follow that," but I don't know. But again, internal pressure, not external pressure. Nobody came to me and said, "You better rule in our favor." Now, we had a hearing, and, and I did the math. This is how many people signed the petition, and you were eighty-six short. That's what I ruled, and I don't even know if I'm right yet. Because when I, and the other part of that was, when I'm doing the research on some of the issues in that case, there was no precedent anywhere on two of the issues. Is, one of them was are inactive, should inactive voters be counted as part of the ten percent rule? And there's no precedent on that. And so, I made my best judgment based on what I read that the law said, so. Just an example.
Thank you, Judge. I drew question number eight.
Okay.
And that one is, what are the key, what are the key trends in municipal courts that you have been experiencing in the past year, and how do you stay on top of these trends?
I think I kind of touched on all of that. You do it by staying active in the Municipal Judges Association, and staying up on all the new laws, and I explained how I do that earlier. New trends, I, really, a couple of trends, not from this year, but a couple of trends recently. One is bond reform at the legislature, just criminal law in, in general reform. They're moving away from holding people responsible. So some of those laws, I don't love. We talked about what I, what I don't like, what I don't feel like, but I follow them. I mean, so if the legislature says I have to give somebody a PR bond, whether I like it or not, that's what I do. I've said that on the record more than once. I said, "I don't think you deserve a PR bond with this criminal history and your twenty-seven failures to appear, but the law says I have to give you one, so you're getting one." That's just one example. The other, the other trendy is these community courts have been popping up. Drug courts started the trend, I don't know how long ago was that, thirty-something years ago? And then it's branched out. There's veterans courts, and there's homeless courts, and there's family courts, and, but it's all the same sort of model. And Judge Randall started doing one here. And it's growing, but it's been growing pretty slowly. It's a, we're having trouble getting people to show up to our community courts. And the trend in that community court isn't so much to punish people, give them a fine, homeless court, they're not gonna pay a fine anyway, or some other punishment, community service. The, the trend for the community court is to, "Let's see if we can get them some help." What do they need? They need an ID, so they can go get a job. They need to apply for Social Security, or they need disability, or they need some alcohol treatment, or they need, they need a place to stay. So we, we got a homeless navigator, and a homeless navigator to try to help with all these, and plug into all these services that are out there, most of which are free. But if, but if they would just show up, we can get them to into these things and, and help them out as best we can. But they tend not to show up, and then they show up in custody two months later, and and we try to do what we can for them at that point. So those are the two trends that I'm paying attention to the last several years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are the prepared questions we have. We'll see if council has other questions. Mayor Protem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Judge, for being here again. You, you touched on, I think, what I was going to ask. So I guess my question would be, if you were able to continue on as the municipal judge here in Weiridge, what things would you change? Because I know you said that you've, you've kind of taken on what Judge Randall had done before. What, what types of things are you looking to, to change?
I made a conscious effort the last five months not to change anything. And I, I've talked to Kirsten about this. I said, "There's a few things I would do differently than Judge Randall did." For example, I'm more likely to appoint somebody a public defender, even though we don't have to. The law says, that's a hundred percent not clear sometimes either on this subject, but if you don't put somebody in jail, you don't have to give them a public defender. And Judge Randall did that fairly regularly. The prosecutor would come in and say, "I'm not seeking jail on this case," and Judge Randall, so they wouldn't appoint the public defender, even though they were indigent and qualified for one. I'm more likely to appoint the public defender, because I think they might need help. So that's, that's one change. It's not really a change. It's just a little bit of philosophy difference. Couple other changes I got in the back of my mind. I think we're a little low on the fines, on the traffic fines, just a little low. Judge Randall raised the court costs starting this year, five bucks, but I think we're a little low on that. That won't happen overnight either. That's something I want to work out and cooperate with everybody. Because we'd have to get the officers involved that are writing the tickets and, and changing some of the forms, and it won't happen overnight. So, yeah, there's some, some minor changes. Nothing major, that's for sure. Yeah. Thank you.
Additional questions for the judge? Counselor Hoppe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thanks again, Judge, for being here. Being involved in, in your community in a, in a volunteer role is something that's very important to me, and, and I see that you were on the Board of Directors for a very long time with the CMJA, and that just ended in 2023. And so I'm wondering if you have another role in the community that you would like to volunteer at, that you would like to pursue in the future?
Well, in the past, I was on the Board of Directors of DARE, but that has gone away. Somebody decided it wasn't very effective, so nobody's doing it anymore. I don't know if you, drug and alcohol resistance education, you may even had it when you were in school. I don't know, but, okay. Did you learn a lot? You did? You think it was effective? Apparently, somebody decided it wasn't, so. I was a volunteer attorney for Women in Crisis, the homeless shelter up the road. But when I became a judge, that became a conflict of interest, because I was teaching them about domestic violence laws and divorce laws, and that became inappropriate, so I had to give that up. That was a great experience. In the past, although I haven't done it the last couple of years because I had scheduling conflicts, I volunteered for the moot court, the high school moot court competition. But what a great thing that is. The kids that appeared to me, in front of me as, as a judge, you know, they're troublemakers sometimes. Sometimes they're not. They're just kids. But when you see the kids doing the moot court, you see the other side of that, you know? So, it's great, it's great for me personally to see that, as well as to help the kids out. And I told more than one of them, I said, "You do a better job today than most lawyers do in front of me," so. But, of course, they had more time to prepare. But it's true. It's absolutely true. I try to be involved with the community as best I can. For example, I, I went to the, the pre-lighting ceremony at Christmas. I couldn't find a parking place, but I, I tried to go. Things like that, that are not political, I can do. If they're law-related, I can, I can be involved in that. I, right now, my concentration's on the other judges through the Municipal Judges Association. But yeah, I'm, I'm not opposed to doing community involvement. Nothing specific has popped up just yet, but yes, I can do things like that, as long as it's not political and and it's not, and the judges aren't allowed in fundraising either. That's the other side of that. We can't be involved in that. That's unethical rules, so.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, in your work with the CMJA, you've kind of become the resident expert. So, during the, the process before this, it was mentioned that you tend to be somebody that come, that other judges come to for case law and, and for suggestions. So can you maybe speak to that level of expertise? You did mention about writing a chapter in a book as well.
Yes, well, several, but yes. When I was in Westminster, we had some, how do I say it politely, zealous prosecutors. And because of that, and the presiding judge didn't want to, wasn't interested in doing a lot of it, I did a lot of legal research on different issues, speedy trial. When you're, you have to have a trial within ninety-one days of you pleading not guilty, and there's a bunch of exceptions. So I wrote a memo on the subject. That's how all this started. And then, all of a sudden, I became the expert on speedy trial. And then another issue came up, probable cause, reasonable suspicion, and illegal stops by the officer, and, and I wrote a memo, and I became the expert on that. And all of a sudden, I'm writing, I have all these memos that I wrote, and I shared them with all the other judges. Part of that also is, we have a municipal judge's listserv. I don't know, do you guys have a listserv? City, I know the city attorneys do, and the mayors do. Yeah, okay. But the judges, the judges will ask a question. I'll get a question. I just had one last week, or just the other day, about, "I need an order. I just issued a restitution order. Anybody have a sample order?" And I said, "I sure do, and here's my copy. Feel free to plagiarize." I didn't use that word. Feel free to share. So, we get those, those sorts of questions on the listserv all the time. Weekly? Maybe not weekly, but regularly. And I often am the one that's giving them, citing the law. Somebody will come in with their opinion, and somebody will come in with their opinion, and I'll say, "Try to read this statute in this case. This is the correct answer." And I've sort of become famous for that. It's become a joke on the listserv. "Basso, what's the citation for that?" Yes, so, yeah. And I'll open my memo up and get them the citation, so. So, yeah, I'm a regular contributor to the other judges, and I know mentor's the right word, but they'll ask questions. word, but they'll ask questions and I'll, I'll try to help them. Now, some of the new, newer judges, we don't have an official mentor program. We tried to start one up, it just didn't catch on. But I'll, you meet the new judges at the conference, there's always three or four new ones. And you introduce yourself and they say, and they'll say, you need anything? Here's my address, here's my phone number. And then I'd say, I'm happy to help, what do you need right now? Now, well, what do I do for this? And I'll tell them what they do. Here's what I've been doing for 28 years and I hope you do it the same way because I think that's the right way to do it. That kind of thing. So yes, I'm very active and knowledgeable and experienced and all those things, yeah.
Additional questions for the judge?
Judge, I was thinking of one, you know, when you look at the, sort of the trends in our country, if you, law seems to change and not just sort of, you know, how do you, how do you create sort of an equity balance when you, when you look at the changing, the changing law and just society making changes? And does that influence your decision-making or is it pretty clear about what the law says when you apply the facts to it?
It's not always clear. Sometimes we're interpreting things and looking at some of the underlying reasons for the law. The legislative history, so to speak, that's what they call it in the, when they write opinions about it. But trends, I try not to get, to get caught up in the trends until it actually changes. So for example, the great example is gun laws. Big changes, right? Supreme Court said, this Supreme Court says you can, are more in favor of the Second Amendment than some of the previous courts were. And so we have these groups bringing up laws about gun laws and we have gun laws in this, in this town about, do we have to be careful about? Because I just try to follow the law, whatever it is. And if our law is different from the Supreme Court decision from last month, I have to follow the Supreme Court decision. And I'd be talking to the city attorney about, we may need to change this because you read this case. I've had that happen in the past in other cities, so. But trends, yeah, you pay attention to them. I mean, I read the paper every day and I look at the internet news occasionally. I try not to trust the internet as much, but, but yeah, you read, there was, you know, on the internet today, there was an article about, that's what made me think of it, about the Second Amendment and the Supreme Court case from last year and, and stuff like that. So yeah, there's trends about that kind of thing. And I've tried to pay attention to it, but I, I just follow the law, as I stated earlier. And when, if the Supreme Court says we're changing it, then we change it.
Thank you. Any further questions from counsel for Judge Bassel? Well, Judge, this may be time for your summation.
Thank you for the opportunity. Been a little nerve-wracking, thank you. Again, I think, I hope to be your judge for the foreseeable future. And I think having done the job here for the last eight years, I can do it and do a good job for you. And I hope you feel that way also. And that's what I, I have a bunch of people writing me letters of reference about how, what a great guy I am, what a great judge I am, and I hope you can consider that. I do the job, I do it the best I can and I try to be right. I've been wrong once or twice, but I try to be right. And I guess that's all I have. But thank you for the opportunity.
Well, Judge, thank you very much for coming tonight. We really appreciate it. As you know, we're, we're interviewing for the, for the municipal judge and we're gonna, gonna consider, consider the information we've heard and, and figure out how to make a decision. So thank you very much for coming in tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I move to go into executive session for, oh wait, do we have to do this? We have to open special meeting first.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so our second, our second item is staff reports. Mr. Goff, with staff reports?
No, not from the seat.
Okay. No staff reports. Our third is elected officials reports. We have elected officials reports now. Nothing, nothing to come before us, okay? There's no more business to come before our special, or our study session, then we will adjourn our study session.
We're ready to take a motion to, or just, ready to meet.
Yeah, we opened, we opened the special meeting and then within that, we do the exec session.
Okay, so I would like to call to order a special meeting for the Wheat Ridge City Council for May the 20th, 2024.
I would think we should have roll call.
Why don't we?
Roll call.
Well, why don't we pledge allegiance to the flag while we're here? Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Jenny Snell?
Present.
Janice Hoppe?
Present.
Rachel Holtein? Scott Ohm?
Here.
Corey Stites?
Here.
Amanda Weaver?
Here.
Don Van Larson?
Present.
Leah Dozeman?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. We have one agenda item tonight and that is to go into special session to talk about the municipal judge. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay. Before we go to our, or? I wanted to see if there was any public comment. I, I have no one signed up to speak on this, either in person or online, so we'll move past our public comment. And now may I have a motion to go into special, to a executive session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to go into executive session for a conference with the city manager, city attorney and appropriate staff under Charter Section 5.7, parentheses 2, and CRS 24-6-402, parentheses 4, parentheses F, for the purposes of discussing a personal personnel matter related to the appointment of a presiding municipal judge. I further move to return to the open meeting at the conclusion of the executive session to take any actions deemed necessary.
Second. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Would the clerk please pull the counsel?
All ayes, no nays, motion carries.
Thank you. And can you start a separate recording, Margie, for the exec session?
Move the executive session and return to the open meeting.
And Margie, if you would stop this recording and start a new one. So we'll give her a chance to... We'll need to give her a chance to do that and we'll turn the video back on. Stretch break.
We're ready.
We're ready.
Maybe. Okay.
Yes, we're ready.
Okay, we are going... We are now continuing our meeting at... Do we have a time? The time is now 9:40. Perfect. Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to direct staff to negotiate a contract for our municipal judge to include the compensation amount not to exceed $110 an hour and that six months prior to contract renewal, there is a presentation made by the appointed judge to city council in a study session with Judge Lucero and to bring forward to a future business meeting of council in the form of an ordinance.
There's a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to start by saying that we had two very fine candidates. We had some very long interview sessions with them, some very specific and detailed questions that they answered in presentations that they prepared for us. And I appreciate both of their enthusiasm to be a part of our community and a leader in our community. I will be supporting this motion for Judge Lucero as I feel that we are in a position in our community where we can bring in some new fantastic energy into our leadership as we move into the next chapter of Wheat Ridge.
Counselor Weaver.
Thank you for that motion. Counselor Hoppe. This has been a really tough choice this evening. The two candidates were very, very qualified and again would be equally great in Wheat Ridge. I too agree that I will be putting my support towards Judge Lucero tonight. I really liked his vision for what he presented for Wheat Ridge and I'm very excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a member of the search committee, I really enjoyed being a part of this process and we had some great candidates and some great interviews and tonight was equally... These gentlemen did a great job. I think given some of what we saw tonight and as we move forward, I think that Judge Lucero is going to make a great candidate for us and I think that his demeanor on the bench, hopefully, if his interviews have been any indication, he'll make a great candidate and a fantastic judge for the city of Wheat Ridge moving forward and I look forward to seeing what he does and what he does with his courtroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there more discussion on the motion? Counselor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. We did have two great candidates. Thank you Judge Bassow and Judge Lucero and I am definitely going to be supporting Judge Lucero. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to Judge Lucero and Judge Bassow for coming in and interviewing this evening. I too participated on the search committee and really enjoyed the process and working with other members of our community and staff to go through the process of selecting our next municipal judge. We haven't had this opportunity for 20-plus years and Judge Randall was wonderful. And I agree that both candidates were equally qualified or... and wonderful. And so it was really definitely a hard choice. I will say that I was leaning towards Judge Bassow just because he has immense experience, not only in municipal law but in Wheat Ridge, the Wheat Ridge courtroom specifically. You know, he's the resident expert in Jefferson County. A lot of judges look to him for his expertise and knowledge and he has really good rapport with other Jefferson County judges and has served Wheat Ridge very well. I will say that he was my top contender throughout this process and I think that he would continue the excellence that Judge Randall set here in Wheat Ridge. Having talked to some of the discussion with my colleagues in, you know, Judge Lucero's qualifications and unique perspective of kind of three different roles as prosecutor, as municipal judge and as defendant... defender, I think that he has the lens and expertise to move Wheat Ridge forward, which is what we've been discussing. And so I will support Judge Lucero and thank Judge Bassow for his dedication to Wheat Ridge and his expertise and I hope that he continues to mentor others in our community.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion? Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a tremendously difficult decision between two outstanding candidates. The... One of the items mentioned was potential longevity and there were projections for one candidate being further along in his career and the other candidate being somebody who frankly has held a number of different jobs in different cities and with a two-year contract, there's no guarantee that a candidate will stick around or maybe move on to bigger and better things. So... But given all... Given the qualifications and given the fact that I did watch Judge Bassow in action and I was very impressed with the way he ran the court, the way his demeanor and his attentiveness to the people that were in front of him, I would have to say that I'm at this point reluctantly having to choose between the two. I'm going to support Judge Bassow.
Thank you. Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate this process very much. As a newer member of council, this has been a great learning. Grateful for all of the time that's taken to interview these candidates. These are both fantastic candidates with tons of experience and I am grateful to our committee that did the previous interviews as well. So thank you. This has been a lot of time spent, as it should be. This is an important thing for our community. I am in full support of Judge Lucero. I believe that as Wheat Ridge moves into our next city plan and our next chapter, I feel like he will bring some new viewpoints and just a really uphold, you know, what we already have here in Wheat Ridge and bring it into... Help us to bring it into the next chapter. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All right, hearing done. Will the clerk please pull the council by a voice vote?
Janice Snell.
This is a... This is an aye. It will be an aye or a nay in favor of Judge Lucero. Microphone.
What am I, just I?
An aye vote is for Judge Lucero.
My vote is for Judge Lucero.
A nay?
Aye.
Janice Hoppe?
Aye.
Scott Ohm?
Aye.
Corey Stites?
Aye.
Amanda Weaver?
Aye.
Dan Larson?
No.
Leah Dozeman?
Aye.
Six ayes, one nay. The motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much, council. Thank you to our attorney and our city clerk. Kristin, thank you very much for your work on this. Mary Ann, thank you very much. Very good discussion. I think we've made a responsible decision for our community. So thank you all very much. We have no further... Are there any... Mr. Goff, we're at a meeting here. Do you have a staff report tonight?
Just real quickly, real, real quickly, since we're talking about municipal court, I just wanted the council to know that, you know, we made changes in the structure from judicial to administrative. Municipal court's going to report to Mary Ann, our Assistant City Manager, in the City Manager's office. And then also, real quickly, we are implementing your changes with liquor license authority. We've appointed Kendra Carberry with Hoffman, Parker, Wilson and Carberry as our administrative hearing officer. They will start in June and the hearings will be once a month, second Thursday at 1:00 PM. They will be virtual unless the applicant requests an in-person hearing. Thank you.
Okay. City attorneys matters?
Other than handing in your information to me and I'll take care of it, nothing. Thank you.
Very good. Elected officials matters. Raise your hand. Counselor Ohm.
I attended my daughter's graduation ceremony. It's for Wheat Ridge High School last Friday and it said it was the 125th, I guess, graduation ceremony.
Really?
So a lot of history there. And I also attended the CML district meeting and I will not make the mistake of not having a... Some notes of telling everybody about Wheat Ridge, but I did my best. I wasn't as eloquent as the mayor. And yeah, Mayor Weinberg sends their bests and speaks really highly of our mayor, so thank you.
Thank you. Further elected officials matters. Counselor Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say that I'm heartbroken that the Nuggets didn't get any further.
Okay. Any further matters? Counselor Snell.
Very quickly, I would just like to thank all of the District One residents that came to our district meeting last Wednesday. It was a great meeting and look forward to the next one. Thank you.
Very great. Thank you so much. We should be back here next week.
No, we won't.
No, we won't. Next week is Memorial Day. We will be off. We will be back the following week. So I hope everyone is very careful over the end and has a good Memorial Day. Remember those citizens in our communities that have given all for that we may be here to be free and to have elections and the discussion that we're able to have. So we pay dearly for this and we should remember those folks. No. With that, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.